All right, thank you. Then let's start the July 5th Wyndham Select Board Meeting at 6:31. It'll be a virtual meeting. We'll do roll calls for all the votes. And in attendance is myself, Gary Chiseman.
Diane Buka.
Peter Clay.
All right, and Steve Pullo says they're town administrator amongst the others. Well, thank you very much and hope everyone had a good Fourth of July. As usual, we start out with any public input if you'd like to raise your hand or get our attention in some manner. I don't see anybody. Do you, Steve?
I do not.
Well, let's go right into the slides then. And Michelle, we don't have them up yet?
No, it's coming. There's been a lag with Zoom and sharing. We're trying to work through it, but it's been like that for about a week now. I'm not sure why.
Hi, can you see them now?
Yes, we have it now. Thank you.
Sorry, my screen needs for some reason. I have to share and then it takes a few seconds.
All right, Steve, you want to go ahead with the announcements then?
Yep, sure. Just this is a announcement that we've seen in prior weeks. May 1st, 2022, in accordance with the water use restriction by law, there are no sprinklers allowed between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. The mandatory water conservation is in effect from May 1st to September 30th. You know, and we will continue to make this announcement with each select board meeting still in effect.
Very important if Switch River continues to decline.
Yep, very important. We have the Wyndham Museum Summer Fair will be held on August 13th of this year. It's the 47th Wyndham Museum Summer Fair. It's a wonderful opportunity to come support local artists. And makers while helping a nonprofit here in Wyndham. This year, they're going to have live entertainment, food trucks, a local brewery, face painting, and different art project breakout groups and a bunch more activities. It sounds like a good time. And here's the updated list of openings on our boards and committees. We are, it's shrinking, but there is still several out there for any individuals that are interested in getting involved in their local government. Now, we'll just keep going.
Yes, keep going right into your report.
All righty. So I know people are probably wondering, or maybe they know a little bit, but wondering what the details were on the 1A with all the traffic today. So they are rooting cars behind the Duke or school. It was, this was due to a hydraulic spill that took place about 40 gallons of hydraulic oil was leaked out of a out of a trash truck when it blew a hydraulic line. DOT and the police chief and deputy were on the scene as well as a hazmat came out to do the cleanup and sealed all the material and protected the storm drains to ensure there was no runoff. The incident took place at about 1 o'clock and the cleanup concluded and the road was open for for motorists at about 5:45. And, you know, last week the COA had a cookout luncheon. Michelle and I took the opportunity to go down there and chat with the folks. And it was really a good time and a great turnout. Go forward to it again next year. And then also, you know, I like to bring up, I got a note from the police chief today about a new one of the new hires, Officer O'Donnell, that, you know, just kind of commending him on his hard work. And, you know, in this particular instance, he said, you know, due to his outstanding investigation and observation skills, as well as the ability to ask pertinent questions, he was able to disrupt a potential theft of construction equipment out on the 128 on ramp. So I thought that was nice. Wanted to give him a shout out for his hard work. Thank you. Thank him. And that is all I have for you this week.
Thank you. From the chair's report, first thing I'd like to mention is congratulations to Jack Open and Jonathan Purdy, who Friday night became our 105th and 106th Eagle Scout and award at the at the community center. Very nice evening and a well-deserved recognition for those two young men. And now they have additional responsibilities having pinned on that Eagle badge. Congratulations. Peter, you were there too. What did you think? You said that was your first one?
Yeah, that was the first time I'd ever been at one of those ceremonies and it was, it was very impressive. And I think that the troop leader threw out some facts about Eagle Scouts that I thought were pretty interesting. Like only 1% of Eagle Scouts ever end up in jail. Like 40% or 50% end up in the military. A lot end up, like 14, 15% end up as ministers. I mean, it's just amazing who these people turn out to be.
Right. Otherwise, Steve stole my thunder on the 1A closure. That was the big event for the weekend. I think the reports, the fairly quiet holiday weekend. So thank you to everyone for being fairly safe.
Maybe we should shift the order, Gary.
All right, can I just add some comments? Because I, so they were going, most of that traffic was going right down past my house. So I walked up to see what was going on and it was very impressive to see what the police chief and the fire chief were doing there. And I walked up later and it was pretty amazing how fast they cleaned that up. And then what was amazing is I saw when they first opened it up and I watched a bike rider come down 1A from Hamilton. I was going, oh, boy, if this is all slippery, that guy's going to go down fast and no problems whatsoever. They did a great job.
Thank you again to all those involved. And it just shows our professional, quick responders there. All right, Diane, over to you. Any member report?
I do not have anything to report this week.
All right.
Thank you.
Then on to consent agenda. Have all three of us read through the, all these minutes and any questions? Corrections or anything? I hear none. So.
So the reality is the only one that I can actually comment on is the 6-7 because I wasn't at any of the other ones.
Right.
And 6-7 looked fine to me.
All right, then. I think, Peter, you actually usually have the motion on the consent agenda. You'd like to read it? No, you're muted.
I move to approve the Wyndham Select Board, Board Meeting Open Session Minutes for 4-5, 2022, 4-6, 2022, 4-7, 2022, 6:07, 2022, approve and release. Executive Session 406, 2022, and 407, 2022.
Second.
Any further comments? Otherwise, the roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. And on that subject minutes, so I expect at our next meeting on the 19th, we'll have the series of executive session minutes ready to go for release.
Thank you.
And will we be, will we be using the new format for, for dealing with minutes? Who's, this would be Catherine. You know what I'm talking about, right?
We've been posting some of the minutes on Google Docs to live edit so everyone can see them. But the select board hasn't run into any issues with, with being a three-member board. So I'm not sure that the chair wants to take that under consideration or not.
Okay, so just the planning board minutes.
At this time.
Yes, got it. Thank you.
Right. All right, so we have, um, most of the seats filled on our committees and boards. There's still plenty of opportunities for volunteers, but we have, I think, two or three catch-ups here to go forward tonight. So Diane, you want to do the honors?
Yes, I do. Quick question. So I'm just looking, we're now going to have a motion to appoint two to the Wyndham Affordable Housing Trust. But on the, the announcement, there is still one opening or is that done?
That should still be there because these are actually reappointments that we had, what the one misspelling and spell, misspelling, so.
Okay, that's what it is. Okay, thank you. So I moved to appoint Albert Windodge and Erica Champa to the Wyndham Affordable Housing Trust for a term beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2024.
A second.
Anything further? Otherwise, a roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And I move to appoint Peter A. Hershey to the Wyndham Veterans Committee for a term beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2025.
Peter, seconds.
And anything else? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And I move to appoint Tracy B. Hutchinson to the I wanted to say.
Wish.
Wish, I know, I'm sorry, for a term beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2025.
Peter, seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
So I move to appoint the following as election officers for a term beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2023. Deborah M., I mean, Sad Day, I'm so sorry if I said that wrong. Martha H. Brennan, Judith H. Hubriskey, Julie M. Clay, Kristen S. Crockett, Juliana F. Dodge, Lori A. Arard, John J., John W. J. Arard Jr., James P. Gowdy, Carleen M. Chelsma, Diana E. Lang, Donald F. Luxton, Anne Merchant, Kathleen M. Marshall, Scott Marshall, Cecily M. Mullings, Deirdre T. Parati, Patricia K. Purdy, Stephanie B. Quinn, Susan R. Roca, Margaret J. Roll, Peter F. Shibley, Janet V. Swuman, J. David Summonsby, Lauren M. Schwartz, Thomas Tanis, Paul E. Terro, Cynthia R. Mears as election clerk, and Dorothy A. Gowdy, warden.
Peter, seconds.
Any questions, comments? One of our most important jobs, keeping the elections straight and fair. Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. And thank you to all these volunteers that help us out with this duty.
That's a great group of people.
I'm sorry, do we ever have this many people?
Yes, you know, we have several elections and not always people being available to schedule for particular days. But with the advent of early voting, it's not a one-day thing anymore as well. So.
Right.
We have enough, I think, if Trudy will agree, but always look for others.
I'm guessing never enough, but.
Never enough.
Never enough.
So Trudy, do you want to introduce this one or if you're on?
Sure, I'd like to. Thank you very much. So the state, state, House and Senate recently approved a Votes Act and part of that was this new requirement. I think we're still struggling with it, the majority of the town and city clerks, because it is new. But we do need a vote of the select board. Um, I'm not quite sure how to word this. With the town clerk working with the police chief to for you guys to approve that there will be a significant number of police officers at the polling location. And this will cover us for the September and the November elections of this year. So it's, it's, I'm, I'm still struggling with the vote, but I spoke, Steve and I spoke with the police chief. And I think it's just a formality at this point. And I guess you guys are just saying that, yeah, there'll be a significant number of police officers. But at this point, we're not going to designate that significant number because we may only need two. If something else happens along the way, we may need six to preserve and protect order. So we're just saying this at the moment.
Yeah, I just, here's just a follow-up. I know when Trudy, Trudy, Police Chief and I had met and discussed it. You know, basically, he's on board. The basically act is just requiring us to make sure that we dedicate a sufficient number of police officers and based on the data at the time, it'll be the police chief's determination of what's sufficient is. You know, and Trudy has, I know, gone through the, the state elections board, right? And got clarification. And this is the motion that the select board needs to take as presented here on the screen.
Questions, Peter or Diane?
Not for me.
None for me.
Very well.
So I move to approve a sufficient number of police officers at the polling location at every election therein to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from any interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws alike relating to elections as required by Section 72 of the Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022.
Peter, seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Thank you, Trudy, for that update. And I guess Trudy, you're actually on again here. If you'd like to tell us about early voting for September?
Sure. So along with this new Votes Act, that early voting in person is going to be a permanent change. It was, it came up during COVID of 2020 and they've decided to make this a permanent change. Yeah, yes. So because and part of this Votes Act says that unless you're going to designate different hours than what's not normal, then your office hours, you need to have the select board to vote. So because of the size of Wyndham, we can have at least 25% of our regular hours designated for early voting during our business hours. Um, and it also talks about weekend hours. So what I am proposing is that this, these hours will be for the state primary and the November. Early voting for the September primary is going to start on Saturday, August 27th. There will be no in-person voting hours on that Sunday. And then for the first, the primary only has one week of early voting. So on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday of that week, which will run Monday, the 29th through September 2nd, I am proposing 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. On Tuesday, it'll be 10 to 5:00 and Friday will be 10 to noon. This, these abbreviated hours allows us, me and my staff to come in and get set up, do any cleanup that we may need to do from the night before, the day before. This gives us a chance to get the pole pads up and running, make sure everything's ready to go at 10:00 AM. So I wanted to deviate a little bit from our normal hours just to give us this extra lead time. Because all the ballots have to be put into the voter registration system as they're processed. So that's why I came up with these hours. And it'll be the same for the November election. Except we'll be doing two weeks of early voting. Wyndham, again, based on our size, is not required to have Sunday hours. We only have to do this Saturday weekend of those two weeks. So for the early voting in November, it's going to start on Saturday, October 22nd. And it runs for two weeks and will end on November 4th, excluding the two Sundays that, that fall on that, those two-week period.
Questions, Peter?
Yeah, Trudy, so you don't normally work Saturdays, do you?
No, I do not.
So how do we? How does that get handled?
How does it get handled? It's just part of my job at the moment. So it's, this is mandated from the state. And I feel sorry for the larger town and city clerks because they now have to work Saturdays and Sundays and it's all based on population. In, in 2016, I believe that was the first time we did early voting, or 2018. It was not mandatory for weekend hours. It was highly encouraged in the state throughout little tokens and rewards. If you, if you did weekends and with COVID, it became a mandate and we're now stuck with it. So we do, we have an option to pay our, our election workers. I, this is something that I will be needing help with. Some, some of those names that, that was just read are volunteers and it's greatly appreciated. But we do have money in the budget to pay those who want to be paid. That doesn't, that doesn't do anything to my salary, Peter, but thank you for asking.
Yeah, it just sounds like, you know, classic state, you know, just, it's kind of like an unfunded mandate for, for the clerks.
You got it. Well said. Thank you.
Anything, Diane?
No, I have no questions. No.
You're getting it all straight over in that other town, right?
Yeah, same, same thing.
Trudy, without confusing things, we're still going to have absentee voting as well besides this.
So yes, absentee voting will still be around. There's three reasons for absentee voting. If you're not going to be in town during the voting hours, religious and medical reason. So they also put in what we basically are now calling a no-excuse voting. So that means if you don't qualify for those three reasons, you can, you can vote in person early or you can do a vote by mail. Um, trust me, the website's going to be so inundated with all of this information, the closer we get in Facebook. And I'll be putting up flyers everywhere throughout town, advertising all of these vote by mail, early voting in-person hours. If I might add, the Votes Act also indicates that the early voting will be done in the clerk's office unless the registrar is deemed that the clerk's office is not sufficient and then we'd have to vote on moving it. So what I'm proposing that the early voting will start in my office for check-in and then we'll be using the select board's room during those three weeks. That will, the voting booths will be set up to give the residents privacy to vote and we'll have election officers in that room as well to, to assist with that.
Thank you very much. So we need to have.
Motion?
The motion.
All right. So I move to approve the hours of early voting for the September state primary and November general election for 2022 as follows. Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, in-person early voting hours will be from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Tuesday, in-person early voting hours will be from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Friday, in-person voting hours will be from 10:00 AM to noon. For both elections, Saturday, weekend hours will be set for 9:00 AM to 1:00. All early voting will be done in the town clerk's office at Town Hall.
Peter Clay, seconds.
Any further comments? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Gary, yes. Thank you, Trudy, and all the volunteers that are going to support you on this busy election season.
Thanks.
So is Vicki Massone online yet?
I do not. I do not see her online yet.
All right. Then let's circle back to letter D when we see her come on. Does that sound good, Steve?
Sounds good to me.
All right. All right. So item E, discussion on target dates for review of proposed board policies to be added to the calendar. So perhaps over to you, Diane. Do you have a plan in mind? We have some 20-plus possible policies that we need to get going on.
Yeah. So I don't have a plan in mind as of yet. I think we have a spreadsheet started. And we have a couple of policies that we discussed that we were going to start with. And I think the first step is, was for them to go through staff. Is that correct, Steve? And then we would bring it to the meetings.
Yeah, the intention at the last meeting, we were going to, we were hoping to schedule through the vacations as the staff, our monthly staff meeting, kind of the kickoff meeting would be at some point in the middle of August. And part of that would be material I would distribute a week or two in advance to the folks who'll be in attendance. And then they can provide some feedback to me. I'll take notes and then take a stab at drafting it and then send it off to Diane to do some wordsmithing and then the board can view and make any, any further edits that it deems fit.
So I'm sorry, I checked my email for a second. So I got lost in that. So did you say you were going to bring it to the staff? Did you say if you were going to go to the staff in August?
Yeah, bring it. The plan was to bring it to the staff meeting in August. You know, I guess kind of pilot how many we can get through, but without taking up the, you know, the whole entire hour. But, you know, kind of send out, my plan was to send out a few policies a week or so in advance. Let the folks read it and then provide some comment to them at the meeting, take notes, take the initial stab at writing a draft, then provide it to you, Diane. You can do some wordsmithing. And then the select board can make, you know, either the determination that it's good to go or make any further edits.
So we could, we could guesstimate that probably one of the meetings in September, we would get started.
Yes.
And then we get, well, yeah, it's going to be hard to tell how many policies based on which policies they are. I mean, you can't say you're always going to get through three when some are bigger and smaller than others. So it's kind of a stab.
Yeah, I mean, maybe if we want to say, you know, have three to five ready for discussion, you know, a couple of easy ones and maybe a couple longer one. You know, depending on, you know, how quickly for the first or second, up to you guys, but a first or second meeting in September.
It depends on when your staff meeting is. Do you have time to get it to the first meeting in September? We should probably look at our calendars anyway.
Probably, I would prefer a second meeting. If the board prefers the first, then we will get it done.
I think the second meeting is fine with me. What about you, Gary?
I think that's good. There might be one or two, though, that we, we've talked about, I think, the Steve, I think you brought up the need for sorting out the website or a couple others that probably a little bit more urgent from a.
Yeah.
One of you.
Yeah, I would like to write the web, the website, social media. Really not, well, you got social media, personal use, but then social media, business use. And who the, who the point person or people are, website policy to make sure departments are updating their, the appropriate sections pertaining to their department. And also Zoom use. I know, you know, we've talked about, right now, we share a password through a number of people. We're just trying to think about kind of a better way to organize that for, you know, for security reasons and also ease of filing the different meetings that are being recorded at any given time. And then there's no conflict, conflict or overlap where two folks have Zooms posted simultaneously into the same user, which can get problematic.
So maybe we could do, we could focus on the, the more urgent ones and then, but always pull in one of the more general overarching ones at the same time so we can kind of work.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. Obviously, those ones, you know, it might be, you know, it might be something just the board could, could discuss if I could. You know, towards the end of August, middle of August, get you some drafts on those, maybe reach out to some other communities. Right? Because there's, there is a small cost in the Zoom. One traditional user, I believe, we looked up was $120 a year. It's about 10 bucks a month.
How many Zoom rooms do we have?
Right now, we have two. One called the. Right now, we have two, one called the permitting room and one that's. Just kind of a catchall for everybody else and would like to maybe expand that by three, maybe even four. To get everybody kind of. Up and running and independent without the need for, you know, one person kind of managing all the meetings and being. Available to open, you know, eleven and one and seven at night, you know, and just. Keep keeping that on your radar as well as trying to, you know, manage your own day to day stuff on your desk. So I think that that would be. That would be good and kind of help operations here. I know it's kind of a bigger. Discussion on the boards and committees that I think Gary will be going over later tonight. And that could be another policy that kind of get up to the forefront.
All right, so. Sounds like a couple for late August and decisions on the first and September and then we'll start going forward from there.
Sounds good.
Peter, any ideas?
No, I'm good.
All right.
So could I just jump in for a second? So we're talking, we should probably, will we go over the schedule, like a long term schedule at the end of the meeting perhaps?
Yes.
And and talk about whether Zoom is going to continue. I don't know if anyone's heard anything or how we're going to move forward. If we can't have Zoom.
Yeah, I've heard also, and it's not final yet, so I guess I'm just saying that. But all sources seem to be indicating that they're going to extend it at least through the end of the year. But again, no final ruling has has come down.
And just ten days from until decision day, right?
Yeah.
Fifteenth?
Yep.
Yeah, right.
Crazy.
So my understanding, if they do not make a decision, then we have to go back to live. Is that correct? Their current situation? Emergency authorization.
That's correct. Yep.
So.
So I guess that's something to keep in mind, the next select board meeting would be in person.
So I have a problem with that.
Okay.
So just so you know, all of a sudden I had something come up and I won't be here. So I'm hoping that it we can still remote.
Right. Trudy, you got your hand up there?
I do. There was an email that came out today that I believe the. House has voted to extend it and the Senate's going to take their vote. On Thursday on the extending the Zoom. So that was an email that came out late today.
Perfect.
Standby for further news then. All right. Thank you.
The the tension.
All right. Anything else on this subject?
I don't think so.
All right, we'll do calendar at the end. So a discussion on boards and committees handbook, Trudy has put together that extensive guidance and so forth. But I think besides the handbook, this one and the possible meeting with the boards and committees. I've observed. Several aspects that I think we've got to find perhaps a new balance between what the board chairman and board secretaries do. What scheduling and the staff can do and so forth. So areas I think that or rely on Steve for. And we'll get some inputs from the boards and committees, but certainly we've seen there's a need out there for training perhaps. There is a need for recruitment onto particular committees. Certainly, from last week, we saw that the committees are going to have to be somewhat engaged in the master planning processes all. Through the next year, we need to get that integrated into each committee's agendas. The chairman, I think, are going to have to step up and. Be more engaged in getting the agendas into the. Town clerk on time and so forth. And on most of the committees, I think the secretaries are going to have to work more on getting the minutes done. I see the workload and we need to coordinate this with Catherine Tinsley. But over the years, the workload has expanded beyond those committees that really require a legalistic. Full set of minutes. So we'll have to look at that. I think the boards and committees probably need to get more engaged. In the budget process in the past, I've observed that, you know, the departments do their budget. We work all the way through to January or so. And then suddenly a couple of committees or boards put their hands up and go, hey, you know, we want to do this next year. So. The I think the we have to expand the look as to where money's going to be spent a little bit as far as budget. Is required. I think there are some committees also need to. We're going to need more input back to the town administrator, reporting on progress of major events or projects like West Wenham. Playground or whatever. And certainly, as we migrate to, I think it's going to probably be a hybrid situation on the. Meetings, we may need to have some. Better expertise amongst the chairman as to how to handle the both the in person. Portion as well as the Zoom portion of meetings. I know the teachers throughout the country found that very challenging during the school year. And that's something we'll probably have to work on. And lastly, I've observed that we've got to find a. A better balance between the work that the staff does and the work that the committees take on themselves to do as far as. Completing projects and also we need to start deconflicting the meeting days and times. I know everyone's busy and would like to have their own pick of a time, but also I see that. Our staff are working too many nights and too many times beyond their normal working hours to accommodate a long list of a meeting. So. There's just a few ideas I had going beyond the handbook as to. How we might meet with the chairman and discuss some of these things. Diane, Peter?
Makes a lot of sense, Gary. We need to uncomplicate things.
Yes.
When I was working at Gillette, we had just way too many meetings. So we started eliminating meetings. And eliminating people who attended meetings. But it actually helped a lot.
So Diane?
So it's going to be hard to eliminate meetings because in a municipality, we all have to to meet and open. But I do think that we can maybe start to share more of the. Administrative, the Zoom handling, the minute taking more on our volunteers, although. Then people will say they don't want to volunteer because it's too much work. It's kind of a it's a tight rope, but if we need to get things done, we can't always say that someone. On staff is going to be there to open up the Zoom or to take minutes for every committee. We have a lot of committees and we want to get a lot of stuff done. So we really need people. To really get involved in their boards and committees and step up, I think is what you're saying, right?
Yes, and I think the, you know, my idea to get this start is perhaps. The second meeting in August or by your first meeting in September that we might invite all the chairman to. Actually attend the select board meeting and discuss this and see where we can find a balance. Think that'll be worthwhile?
I do.
Would it would it be better for, you know, one of us or you primarily to meet with a group of them? And have more of a, I see Trudy's hand up, but have more of a hands on. Less. Big meeting?
All right. Yeah, certainly, there's a wide range of. Workloads that different committees generate for the town staff, but I see that. As we get more and more mandates from the state and we have so many projects underhand that. And, you know, just the cost of the staff, you got to, you know, have some of the routine administrative stuff picked up elsewhere.
Right, so go ahead.
So, thank you. I was just, with all due respect, I was a little surprised to see this on the agenda because I wasn't quite sure what the discussion. Around this handbook was going to entail. Diane had asked and it was sent to all three of you several weeks ago. And there are very few edits that came back mostly from Gary. If this is a starting point for what you want to do with the boards and committees. Then it makes sense to bring this up on the agenda. And Gary, as far as your comment. About meeting notices coming in late, that is not true. And maybe I misunderstood you, but everybody is posting their minutes in a timely fashion. The trouble that we sometimes have is amended agendas that keep coming back and forth and sometimes up until the last minute. So boards and committees need to make sure that what they're going to put forth on their agenda is done in a timely fashion where there's not so many. Amendments being made. And as far as training, I'm not sure what that is based on. The handbook itself is a basic outline of what the positions on each chair does, and it was mainly. A tool to provide all of the state mandates that are required as far as the ethics and open meeting law and the online test.
Yeah, so you know, the mandatory training we have covered, but what I was looking at more was. Development of a Zoom expertise so that chairs can, you know, utilize the codes to. Open their own meetings without having to have a staff person there for some of the others. And certainly is not a matter of getting the notifications in on time. But I know that some committees seem to be totally reliant on our staff members to get those jobs done. So. Just some ideas we'll put out there and.
So I'll just interject. So I think you mean some some, every committee and board needs to have an agenda. They need to have their minutes and they need to host their meeting right now on Zoom. So maybe just a review and maybe some of the chairs could take over some of that. Job from the staff, right?
Yes.
I think that rather than rely on all the staff to do. A menial tax of the agenda, when should it be done and how do we do it? So we don't need to amend it. Amending within that forty eight hours is a wishy washy thing, you know, maybe a. How to be type little. Training.
All right. Very well, then. I'll see if I can put together some notes for our next meeting and see if we want to. Either set up a one or three member. Meeting amongst us to. Talk with the assembled chairman. And I think they have to be into August anyhow, as July is reorganization month. So we'll get the new chairman up and running and see. All right. Well, thank you for the inputs there and Trudy, thank you. Next is G, which is.
I see Vicki is in the.
Yeah, it's Vicki now.
I'm here.
All right. Let's circle back to item D then. And as the public may know, a while back, we passed a climate resolution. But we'd just like to hear from Vicki update on our green community efforts and what she might have on mind to. As practical steps we can take to start meeting climate change issues.
Yes, thank you all for having me. I apologize. I missed my item. You guys moved quickly. I got to learn that. So thank you for having me. A quick update on the resolution is it was a three parter, really, so. The Hamilton Wenham Climate Action Team, which is a group of volunteer residents. Kind of were the engine behind this climate change resolution and they contacted me to really get an update on what each town was doing. Hamilton Wenham, me and the school district. So I brought them up to speed on things we've done so far and things that are in the works. And in the meantime, there's been work going to get this resolution passed at all three with all three entities. So. And Hamilton had passed at their town meeting and it's working through the select board there. The the school district, it's with their council and Wenham. Was voted by the select board in May. So they're all at kind of different places. So there isn't a big concerted effort yet. But in the meantime, we're just kind of planning what kinds of things we want to tackle. And I'm, you know, working from the town's perspective, so they have their ideas and I'm representing the town to. Help some of their ideas get support. So I guess to answer Gary's question, green communities, we're applying for the next grant round in the fall. We're looking at some HVAC controls, upgrades at town hall potentially. Also potential conversion to a heat pump system at town hall versus the chiller system that we have now. And just always bring in contractors through to help us find energy efficiency projects in the buildings. But in the facilities, that's one of our big efforts. And on the library, the solar is should be going up in the next couple of weeks. They're finishing the roof, I think, this week. And then the solar company will be right behind them putting the solar up. So that's been a long time coming. And that's about where we are now on Wenham's side.
On the. Big picture of climate change, certainly the seacoast communities have, you know, storm surges and stuff that they are most concerned with. What about Wenham? What do you see as, you know, the the largest effect of climate change that we're going to have to address?
You know, even though we don't have sea level rise directly to worry about in Wenham, it's certainly. Temperature change is going to have an impact. So even though it may not be in the form of sea level rise, there's other just. Heating up situations and have you cool buildings and it kind of changes the whole. HVAC picture of a lot of the buildings. So just temperature change in general, I think, is what we're looking at.
Peter, Diane?
I think for me, that was a great question, though, Gary.
Yeah, a lot of the non-coastal communities are kind of ignored because of all the big push about sea level rise, but you certainly are going to have issues of your own. In the non-coastal communities.
Very well. So we're thinking certainly by into the fall that all three entities will have. Adopted their resolution, hopefully. Fair statement.
Yes.
Suppose the the other major effort will be coming through the school building committee to make that a. A very efficient entity.
That's what we're working on.
All right, all right. Peter, anything?
Yeah, so Vicki. I'm sort of biased because I I drive a Model Y Tesla. There are a number of. Police forces. That are using Teslas. And. I mean, they're low cost. You never have to fix the brakes because they break themselves. Nobody's going to get away from you because they're so fast and they handle so well. I know. That the police in Topsfield have a couple Teslas and I think Ipswich as well. So my thought is. At some point, and in now, like Ford's coming out with. The F one fifty. So there are all these options out there. That. For vehicles. And I think someone ought to like just kind of ponder that. Because they, I think that they know the DPW and police and fire. Know when they need to replace vehicles. And so I just think it'd be interesting if they considered. Would EVs make sense for. The town?
Sure. Yeah, there is. There's a big question. There's a ton of money that comes down for EVs. In June, there was a webinar that I forwarded to all the the town departments. Where they could listen to their peers about how the machines perform for their functions. So they had a DPW director, they had some police chiefs and fire chiefs talk about actually using the vehicles because that's the biggest hesitant. Hesitancy, I think, is the the department heads don't think that these vehicles can do what they need them to do. So DOE ER put on this great webinar about, you know, real life examples of these in action. And, you know, I can bring this stuff to the department heads, but really they need to decide how to run their departments. I mean, I can help them apply for grants. I can help figure out charging. But I can't tell the police chief, you need to buy an EV. So I'm hoping by exposing them to other departments and other towns who've done it, they'll get, you know, more excited about it and want to pursue it. As their vehicles get retired, like you said.
Well, you know, they have charging stations right behind Hamilton Town Hall.
Yeah, I put them in. Yeah, I helped put them in. Those were all completely grant funded and we're getting a DC fast charger at. And we're getting a DC fast charger at Patton Park, grant funded.
Wow.
How about down this way?
Sorry?
How about down Wenham here?
Yeah, well, we looked at town hall. At the time we did the Hamilton Town Hall, um, we were gonna apply for Wenham Town Hall too. We had an application all put together. But the hesitancy was that it, it needs to be designated, dedicated parking spots. So there was a little uncertainty bit about taking the spots away from the town hall parking lot for the EV charger. So if, you know, decided not to move forward, but certainly um, it's, you know, I've done it and I can help find money to do those projects if, if the board is interested or department heads are interested.
All right. Sounds good. Any other questions? Uh, Peter?
Nope.
All right. Well, thanks you for coming on with us tonight and uh, look forward to uh, grant money and uh, the plans ahead for the next year. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, hey, Michelle. So we're jumping back to uh, where are we at here? About uh, we talked about the chairs meeting H. All right. So Jamie, you're up. Are you on?
I am. Um, Michelle, could you put up my um, my PDF, if you don't mind, please? No, it hasn't opened yet. Michelle, is it easier if I share my screen? I have it up?
And I, I'm just trying something different. Actually, yeah.
There you go. Thank you. All right. So these are under via transfers that we need to fill um, a few gaps that we had during the year. Um, the library, it was in the way that it's the same pot of money. It was just in the way that we put it in the warrant book. So uh, different amounts were put under different department heads inadvertently. So we were just moving some of the money from head of circulation, three thousand five hundred ninety dollars to um, one thousand one seven hundred fifteen dollars to head of reference, one thousand five hundred sixty dollars to young adult librarian, three hundred and fifteen dollars to the director's position. And then from admin librarian, two thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars from children's, to children's librarian, four thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars to technical services librarian, six thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars to the assistant director position. So this is not changing any of the money in library. It's the same um, it's their same exact budget. It's just the money that was allocated on their warrant. Um, this is part of the uh, comments that I talked to FinCom about wanting to finish the final product in the warrant book at least a month before it goes to print. So I have time to send to department heads, to send um, to the board, so everyone can take a look at it and send their edits at once and then have a solid final and not eight finals. Um, the next is, do you want me to stop after every department or do you want me to do the whole thing?
No, I think you can work through everything and then we'll see if there's any questions at the end.
Perfect. Um, the next one is snow removal expense and it's going to, for three thousand dollars, moving that from to snow salary and wages for three thousand dollars. And um, they went over a little bit on their wages, but they were able to, I was able to cover that cost with their expense. Um, salary for the land use department needed an additional two thousand dollars and that was due to an opening in that department. Um, the planning coordinator worked extra hours, so they went over a little bit in their salary. So I took a thousand dollars from the land use expense line and a thousand dollars from the tax title expense line to give to um, fill that gap. Cemetery expense for two, we took two thousand dollars from the cemetery expense to add it to the cemetery overtime. It's, that covers um, the burial agent. And then for finance expenses, we needed another five, four thousand five hundred dollars. And that is roughly what I increased our budget for FY twenty-three. Previously, when the finance budget was um, put together, it wasn't taken into account the fees that we paid to Hilltop, which is our financial advisor for the um, bands that we get for um, Longfellow and um, the fire truck. So there, it was usually a cost of two thou, twenty-two hundred dollars for each one. So we took two thousand five hundred dollars from the finance salary and wages and two thousand dollars. I'm sorry, that second line that says finance salaries and wages should say tax title. We took a two thousand dollars from tax title to make up for that four thousand five hundred. Um, COA's expense line was short two thousand dollars. They're still waiting for state money that should have come in. So I just wanted to make sure that this was covered as of June thirty to make sure there's no issues. He had extra money in his um, COA salary and wages line due to turnover in that department. So we moved that over. Um, town hall salaries and wages and IT contract services. I took thirty-one thousand from town hall salaries and wages and five thousand seven hundred from IT contractors to put that into the town administrator salary line. Um, because of the turnover in the town administrator salaries, we needed to cover the, those funds in there. And that covers our previous town administrator, the interim town administrator and the current town administrator. And then street lighting, we took an extra ten thousand dollars from IT contract services and moved that over to street lighting. Our national grid bills have been coming increasingly high. Um, so there's no shock there that, that um, the street lighting account needed a little bit more money. The reason why we had extra money in that to, in the IT contract services line is because it was a project that wasn't completed this year because of their um, turnover that we've had. Um, we're hoping to get those projects done in this coming, well, the current fiscal year now.
So for um, for the public, all these transfers are essentially moving money between sublines within the department. So this is not an increase in expenses. It's just shifting unused money over to places where we need to plus up a little.
Correct.
Right? And I know, uh, for example, on, on the cemetery expense, you know, sometimes you uh, see different trends. Cemetery overtime comes in that the DPW does the Bureau's weekdays. But we now find that uh, more and more people are having the uh, funerals on weekends. So that encourages the summer time overtime, but we charge more, so it all balances out.
Correct.
Diane, Peter, questions on any of these? And these, this has already been signed off by the uh, FinCom, correct?
Correct.
We'll see.
Last Wednesday.
Right.
Yep.
I have no questions. Really well done.
Neither.
All right. Well, thank you, Jamie, for a great update on this. And uh, overall, how's the twenty-two budget coming in at the end of the year?
Um, right now, we're still closing out the books and we had um, our last AP, well, not really closing the books, but winding down. We have one more AP next week on Tuesday for FY twenty-two. We have one more payroll, which is four days left of the fiscal year for next week as well. Um, it's looking good, a lot better than last year. This time last year, I may or may not have cried a hundred times, so it, this year it's good.
I see the smile, so it must be much better. All right.
Yes.
All right. So uh, we have a motion for this one?
Hmm. I can pull it up.
Michelle, I'll get it back up.
Okay.
All right, either way.
So there we go. I move to approve the year-end transfers as approved, as approved by the Finance Committee on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two and as presented tonight.
Peter, seconds.
Anything further? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Certainly.
And Gary, yes. Thank you for, Jamie, for a great presentation and uh, things look much better this year.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Uh, Steve, do you have this one?
Good, sorry. Uh, yeah, so this is the Hamilton Wenham Shared Assessor Agreement. A version of this agreement has been before the uh, Select Board before a couple of months ago uh, and was signed. But we then found out that in agreement of sharing assess, assessing services um, between municipalities is the only municipal agreement that the state requires to have um, the Commissioner of Revenue sign off on. So it kind of reopened that discussion where we had to coordinate with um, the Bureau of Local Accounts that they're down and the Bureau of Municipal Finance Law to kind of explain our vision. Uh, let them review the intermunicipal agreement as well as the job description to get them to reapprove it. Very minimal uh, changes. The only changes were we referenced some laws that have since been updated. Uh, and they caught that and we updated appropriately. So other than that, the wording uh, is the same, but we, since there were changes, we now uh, needed to put it before the, the uh, the Select Board. And you know, and just to add, the Board of Assessors is uh, something we're going to look at or we're going to provide. And I promised them within the next thirty days to have a draft uh, across their desk to see a uh, some sort of a side letter or a memorandum of understanding, amending the agreement to include their uh, input in the performance overview of the individual in the office. Uh, the, the first agreement and the second agreement were both lacking in, in that. And we just want to respect the authority of their Boards of Assessors and uh, you know, make sure that their feedback is heavily weighted in, in this process.
Questions, Diane or Peter?
Nope.
All right. So uh, for a public, so what we're gonna end up with here, Steve, is uh, if you make sure I'm on the right track, is one shared top assessor. That will be the uh, technical uh, guru for everything. And then each community will have their own assessor in the town at the counter available. So that for the public, there really won't be much visible change. Is that correct?
Yeah, so direct the, conceptually it is uh, you know, I, well, I feel, believe it's a good deal for Wenham. So we have essentially a two-third, one-third split in the cost of the shared assessor. And that individual will actually be splitting his or her time fifty percent in both communities. So essentially for one-third the cost, we're getting half this person's time, which I feel is a good deal. And then we also will have um, one full-time equivalent uh, for a clerk level position that will be in the office. Uh, and we're also looking at, that will staff the assessor's office on, you know, Monday through Friday schedule. We're also looking at um, some, building some capacity into that position with cross-training in the finance office. So that in the case that of vacations in the assessor's office right now, the office currently, I'm basically have to turn the lights off because there's nobody, nobody there while there's the vacation. And we'll have, you know, there'll be cross-training to um, answer and process most routine questions and uh, related tasks um, in the event that there's an absence.
Sounds good. All right. Are we ready for the motion then, Diane?
Yes. I move to approve the Hamilton Wenham Shared Assessors Agreement as of July fifth, twenty-twenty-two and as approved by, by Hamilton and to be submitted to the state for final approval.
Peter, seconds.
Anything else? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Thank you, Steve, for pulling that all together. I think that's gonna be an asset to the town to have someone in the assessor's office all the time.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, I think it's gonna work well.
All right. So um, Peter, I think this is actually yours and we want to pass or give us an update or where are we at on water?
Well, um, so imagine my surprise when I found out that uh, that this whole topic of water um, is a pretty volatile one. And there are, let's say, they're facts and then there are people who throw out things that are not facts. And I, I had a wonderful meeting today uh, with Eric Mansfield um, who took me through a lot um, and really helped me. We also have, so he's on and as is Ernest. So basically, this bill S point five three O is actually not in the best interest of the town. So I withdraw this motion.
All right. Yes, Diane?
Yeah, Peter, can you just explain to me what the bill S five thirty is? And, and then maybe we'd understand why it's not good. I didn't know anything about it.
So, so basically, it's this letter was to try and reach to the Ways and Means Committee leaders to get them to actually put this bill out for a vote. Um, the, the short answer or the headline on this bill is that it was, it was going to try to level the playing field for all towns. So potentially uh, it would shut down the uh, um, the fact that um, Salem and Beverly don't have water bans. But in talking to um, Eric, uh, it's never quite that easy. And um, that they may actually come back and try and take more water away, force us to, to use less water. And that's why it's not in the best interest of the town. Eric, I don't know if you want to expand?
Yeah, so I mean, this bill was presented by the Watershed Association, it's not, um, so it was very one-sided. Um, and there are other um, Senator Tires working on a task force right now that is actually a, a lot more uh, level even with uh, most of the city, the cities and towns in the Ipsus River and even outside of the Ipsus River Basin um, that is looking at, you know, a, a a long-term solution to the possibility of, you know, the depleted groundwater sources that we have now.
All right. So I think uh, we'll pass on this one and wait for uh,
Ernest.
Senator Tires, or here's Ernest on to?
Uh, thank you very much. And Peter, thanks for bringing it up. Um, I'm the Chair of the Water Commission and I'm a hydrogeologist by training. And as Peter noticed, I think this bill is identified to deal with regional water issues. And Eric mentioned the Senator Tar Commission, which I think we will support. Um, but what we were concerned about would be having kind of unilateral restrictions placed on us. And we have done very well to do water conservation. We're actually using less water now than we have been. And it is pretty unlikely that our wells would dry up. But we would participate in any regional um, compact to be able to do it. So uh, we agree that would probably is inappropriate to join on to this at this time. But we will continue to work uh, with the commissions that Senator Tar has done. join on to this at this time, but we will continue to work uh, with the commissions that Senator Tar has done. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, so Gary.
Yes.
Eric sent me um, a really good report um, by, it's the Mass Water Suppliers Association. Was that it, Eric?
Mass Water Works Association, yeah.
Mass Water Works Association. And it's, it's worth reading because basically it's kind of like there are all these myths that are out there and um, these guys basically um, pop every one of them. And so if I send that to Michelle, can she share that with the rest of us?
Yes.
The rest of you? I will do that. And I have um, reached out to um, Senator Tar's office to get on the sustainability, his sustainability task force. And just kick the tires on that.
Sounds good. Alright, and uh, no action on this uh, business item then. Alright, Michelle, one more? Alright, so um, the Affordable Housing Trust uh, met last Thursday and heard from the uh, Harbor Light Community Partners a request to increase the Wem's contribution to the Maple Woods. Uh, Andrew presented, and I hope the other two members of the board were able to view the recording of that meeting showing that uh, the two hundred fifty thousand dollars additional from Wenham is just a, a small portion of what they anticipate of a three million dollars additional that they're uh, be receiving from the state and from other funding sources. Uh, Andrew went through and uh, demonstrated that uh, this was not a unique situation, but that all of their projects uh, as we know, uh, building is expensive right now, are hitting the same kind of problems. So I believe um, the uh, Affordable Housing Trust was a four-zero vote in favor of this or a five-zero, can't remember exactly. But essentially, it now comes to the Select Board to confirm the uh, Affordable Housing Trust's commitment of an additional two hundred fifty thousand dollars uh, to this project, which will be putting us above the uh, ten percent on the forty B or actually has. Diane, Peter, over to you.
I think you answered the key question that was being asked, which was, is it just this project or is Harbor Light seeing that across all their projects?
So it's all the projects and anyone in the public uh, can uh, go view that Affordable Housing Trust uh, recording. And Andrew did a good job of uh, the hard numbers going through the different projects they have. And this was uh, quite reflective of the, the situation for all of them.
And if I could add that, it's not just the Harbor Light projects. It's all the projects in the state are going through the same issue.
Alright.
So, yeah.
Alright, any other uh, questions, comments, Peter or Diane?
Nope.
Alright.
So I moved to approve, yep, I moved to approve the change in the amount of loan, of loan agreement dated November twelfth, twenty nineteen. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading. Twenty nineteen between the town of Wenham acting by and through the Wenham Affordable Housing Trust Fund and Harbor Light Community Partners, Inc. from two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand as recommended by the Wenham Affordable Housing Trust at their meeting dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Peter, seconds.
Anything further? Roll call vote then, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Alright, so um, the calendar coming up. So we're looking at some uh, vacation time and so forth. So July nineteenth looks like a busy meeting. Uh, I think we, ARPA is coming on the agenda. I think we have more finance information perhaps on Longfellow. Steve says, and um, looking at the schedule for the fall special town meeting, I would propose that we probably open the warrant on July nineteenth. Uh, given that it had been planned for August second, but if you're uh, Diana Peters' schedules permit, I'm thinking uh, August meetings on the ninth and twenty-third.
Okay.
That will, that will give us uh, two weeks between meetings, two weeks between the twenty-third meeting and the first one in September. And they'll uh, if we vote to open on the um, July nineteenth, the warrant, it will allow uh, people to take a vacation as scheduled.
So Gary, can, can you just mention August?
Yeah, so August ninth will be the first meeting.
Yep.
And August twenty-third will be the second meeting in August.
Got it. And what about September? Do we have any plans for?
Yeah, so September, two weeks later will be uh, who's got the calendar? It's the day after Labor Day.
September sixth, that's the primary.
That's Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so uh, you out on that day?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. So.
You can't have a meeting that day anyway, so the seventh is alright if that works for you guys.
So how about Wednesday, the seventh? Does that look good, Peter? Seven September?
Seventh, got it.
Alright. And we'll, so that'd be seventh and backing up a day plus fourteen will make the twentieth of September the second meeting that month.
Right.
Alright. So uh, anticipate a full meeting on the nineteenth. Uh, Steve provided me, it's a actually hard copy paperwork. So uh, reading through the requests for ARPA, so I'll read that tonight and get it back to him and we can uh, pass that around so we can uh, have a look at the department requests on uh, ARPA and we'll have some discussions on the nineteenth on that. Also, as I said, we'll get the uh, executive decision, executive session minutes ready for the vote on the nineteenth. I think Steve's, you said we'll, should have the Longfellow um, briefing from uh, Finance Department to the Select Board on that evening as well.
Correct.
Alright. And um, any other big items? Diane, Peter?
After the nineteenth, I'm just looking at the schedule still.
Alright. Very well then, then uh, I think that's the, works out.
I could question, questions on the schedule though. I didn't know if there were other, other issues. If, looking at the special town meeting on Saturday, the first.
Yes.
Um, and our last meeting that we're having scheduled so far is September twentieth. We usually do like a warrant hearing or something, usually like the Monday before the special town meeting.
Yeah, so that would be.
Well, Shoshana.
On Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that.
Which kind of messes me up.
Yeah, that's uh, usually fairly led by FinCom as far as they're going to do the warrant.
Okay.
On, on the Monday.
Mm-hmm.
So um,
Not my worry.
Yes, because I think, I think it's like uh, our presence is uh, requested and traditional, but I, I don't think we've had much input other than to be there on the, the warrant hearings. That's more the, the thing.
Okay, thank you. Alright, good.
And then I think the other dates uh, miss your holiday schedule as well.
They do, yeah.
And then we would plan uh, on closing the warrant on the uh, August twenty-third meeting. Open it on the uh, July nineteenth, close in August twenty-third. That uh, plenty of time to uh, get the warrants set forth. And I know Steve is working with the uh, School Committee and Superintendent to make sure we have the exact wording on those.
Yeah, so the, the board will be approving the ballot wording on the ninth. Because that has to be into the state uh, physical form and electronic by uh, I believe it's September third, August third.
August third, yeah. And uh, other things for a special town meeting, I think as we're meeting, it may be an opportunity if we uh, have the staff time available to uh, clean up uh, some of the uh, clerical items within the uh, the bylaws as we change to Select Board and uh, so forth. So we'll take a look at what workload we have there to get that done.
Could add, if we could add something to the, to the special town meeting that would bring people out, that would be helpful.
Yes, yeah, right.
I don't know what.
So we'll see uh, how the meeting restrictions come along, perhaps uh, you know, food's always welcome, so.
We always could fool them by telling them we're gonna do an override.
Oh, yes, yeah, that will get, that'll get the crowds out, right? Alright. Anything else, Steve?
Uh, that is all I have tonight.
Alright. Uh, thank you, Catherine. Uh, minutes look great and uh, look forward to those for this meeting. And uh, last chance, Peter or Diane? Otherwise.
No, I'm all set.
Who wants to make a motion?
Well, I'll do it. With nothing left to further discuss, I moved, we adjourned the uh, July fifth, twenty twenty-two Select Board meeting at seven fifty-two.
Oh, second.
And roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Meetings adjourned and thank you very much to uh, the staff and everybody that uh, helps us through the week.
Alright, guys.
Alright, stay safe.
Night.
Good night.